Good evening. Welcome to the October 21st, 2025 meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Goli Saper and I called this meeting to order at 5:32 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at Dover Sherborne Middle School Library this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. First on our agenda, this evening is community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment but for whom it is not possible or prefer to attend in person this evening. Do we have any comments on Zoom?
Not that I can see.
Kevin has now joined us.
All right. So no community comments. We can now move to the next item on our agenda, which is PTO update. We have our co-president Lauren today with us. Lauren, please take it from here.
Great. A lot of these slides should look familiar to the end of last year. We've just refreshed them, so we'll kind of go through and relive it again really quickly. Should go to the next slide. This is just our PTO board. The thing that's been exciting for us is a lot of new faces. I think it's been great that we've had, you know, Sarah is the vice president. She's doing a tremendous job. Our fundraising group is brand new, so that's been exciting for us. I know it's usually the same people, it's all going over again now. Some new blood, that's good. And I should say, Asima sends her love. She couldn't make it today, but I represent both her and me. So this is just all of our community events. I want to just call it, we've already had the popsicles in the park, the welcome back picnic, which was a huge hit. I think everybody's been really enjoying that. International Culture Day is this Thursday, so if anybody wants to stop by, please feel free. Let's call it the STEAM day is a new one. I think we're really excited for this. We haven't done that before. But the rest, I think, are tried and true activities, so it's the same as last year. Chickering events, so specific, not necessarily to the community, but to insight to schools. And we have our usual supporting the fish tank, all of the outdoor classroom activities that we do, the community outreach activities, the playground equipment, things like that. Pretty much just set us close last year.
What's Spotify?
We have a Spotify account that we contribute to, so that we can have our.
And then Spotify, that's real.
Yeah. It's limited for the lobbies, music for assemblies.
Great.
And like Zoom, we should add Zoom, pay for Zoom accounts.
Okay, great.
This has been refreshed, the curriculum enrichment programs. This is where the bulk of our expenses go. We do a tremendous amount per grade, lots of exciting field trips. I want to say for the most part, everybody is in the saddle, figuring out what they need to do and starting to schedule their activities, so it's good. Okay, and of course, our teacher support. So love the hospitality, making sure we take care of our teachers and getting their grants, getting their discretionary funds all squared away and the issue fund as well. So I don't think there's a change from last year there. Okay, so we have revised the financials. Not a lot of changes. It's more just we've sharpened the pencil on the budget. Some spots were like, I need 500, not 250. I need 250, not 500. So all in all, I think the net is still the same. We are showing a little bit of a variance of like minus 16K, but this is normal. This happens to us every year and nothing to be concerned about. So approximately, we're hoping that our income will be 107 and our expenses will be 123, sort of the high level there. The auction, I should say, is like our biggest, which is every other year, one year's a check writing, the next year's auctions, is an auction year. That will be our biggest fundraising activity this year. Okay, so here's the projected income. So you can see the auction in blue is kind of the big one, as I mentioned, and then right after that is all the fundraising activity. So we have a couple of new ones already, like Mabel's Labels and Minted is something new. So the fundraising group has had a lot of like new ideas. That's been pretty exciting for us. Sorry. Almost done. Okay, so expenses. We continue to spend the bulk of our money on curriculum enrichment. I love that because it goes directly back to the kids. It's like my favorite thing that we do. And then after that, of course, supporting all of the teachers. Our fundraising, we do have to spend a little money to make money, of course, but after that, I think the less is like, you know, just the standard stuff of books from the heart. We try to add a little, augment it a little bit with more books and supporting administrative for smaller expenses. Okay, so the big ask is this is our auction year. We are planning to have it in the Chickering Cafeteria. We did have it there two years ago and we do serve alcohol. So we were asking for approval that we could do this again this year. Is, so all in favor?
So that'll be in the consent agenda.
Yeah, we will discuss, we will get votes on consent agenda today.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so that's the big ask here, making sure that we're okay with that. And so then, do you just let me know that it passed?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay. The theme is the Awantay Coast. It's like deliciously meat, it's really exciting. So you should also mark your calendar for that one as well.
What's the dates?
April.
It's on the slide.
April 11th?
April 11th.
Yeah. It's gonna be exciting. Last year, I mean, two years ago was a lot of fun. That's it.
They made it not look like Chickering Cafeteria. Oh, we got a print outside.
Yeah. A lot of the activity now will be reaching out and getting all the auction items.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Any questions for Laura?
Is that your find out the window?
No.
Sally and Kevin, do you have any questions for Lauren?
No, I was excited to hear about it. The auction sounds like a lot of fun and April 11th is my birthday, so really excited to be there.
I don't have any questions also, very much looking forward to the auction.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. We really appreciate all you do for.
Yeah, sure.
Get some school on teachers. It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Makes Chickering special to have all this extra enrichment for the kids, so thank you.
I guess I have one question. How does the enrichments get selected? Like, there's a whole laundry list.
Yes. I, like, enrichment's close to my heart because I was the chair a couple of years ago, so I love that. All of the teachers every year will review, Spencer will review like what they've done in the past. A lot of times they are the same because it's still new to the kids.
Yep.
But so like they have already like a good idea of things that they have worked in the past. Usually they might want to swap one or two out because if the standard changes, they may need to like sort of change that one particular. I think every grade gets somewhere between four to five activities.
Okay.
And so like sometimes the activities will also expire, like somebody left and they're no longer doing it. Well, then, in the beginning of the year, the liaisons will talk to the teachers, they'll figure out if there's some sort of new event that they want to do, they'll go research and sign up. So sometimes they also, it's stale too. Like if the teachers have done something every year for the past five years, they might want to just change it up, write authors is one that happens a lot. We have the same author year after year after year. We just want to.
Well, that's one thing we're doing in first grade now. So I do curriculum enrichment for first grade and Ms. Emerson is doing it this year. And this all gets done in years past and she was excited to explore a couple of programs that we haven't done before, so we're gonna keep one but do three new ones because she just thought it would be more exciting for the kids. So I think they keep an eye on what's worked out really well. And part of curriculum enrichment is at the end of the year, you get the teacher's feedback about what they really liked about the programs, what they thought could be improved. So it's sort of like a very collaborative process, but I think it's really neat.
Yeah.
There's always.
Sorry, go ahead.
There's always an academic element to it, like that's the whole thing. It's got to tie into the standard. It's like making sure they're learning without thinking that they're really learning and keeping it fun, so.
Okay.
I had another question. I guess I lied when I said no initially. To what extent is our budget fungibility from PTO raised funds across the rest of our school budget? Like, for example, like could, can PTO funds be used for other school-related events or resourcing that come out of our standard OpEx budgets? Like I said, I don't know enough about the fungibility and how we allocate capital.
So the way that it was explained to me, Brian Treger, which I haven't had that position yet, so I'm probably not the best person, but like we see ourselves as being a steward of the money and it's supposed to pass right back to the kids. Like, we're not trying to hold on to the money to like make gains off of it. Like, people are donating their money, we're researching, and so we really want that to flow right back. Some other things we'll work with Deb is like if the teachers need materials for the classroom, they have grants that they can apply for to be, you know, giving them materials for their classroom. That's kind of how we do it. We ask people to submit the grants for approval though, so that we have that.
Do you have like a charter or a mission that like for, let's say, things were to change? Is there like a standard for which you'd have to review and approve anything that changes? I was just, that was where I was going with the enrichment, like what if somebody ever decided they wanted to do an enrichment and it didn't feel like it was aligned with, I don't know, the protocol that you set or the school sets or who sets the protocol for how?
We follow the teachers' leads. So like they know the standard. Again, if it changes, they're the ones who are gonna initiate that change. Hey, we're not doing maps this year, we're doing erosion. We have to go find something on erosion, right? So the teachers are really leading any change in direction there.
It's the teachers who select. So there's one lead teacher per class, one lead teacher for curriculum enrichment and they select the program.
Okay.
So it's not PTO selecting. And they're all.
But for example, if we had, if we needed a new air conditioning system for the cafeteria, could the PTO, and like the town wasn't, and like the town couldn't come up with the money, could the PTO do a fundraising effort to raise a million dollars for a new, like a new library or a new air conditioning impact system? I just don't understand how to budget.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I think the answer to that is probably no, but I'm curious like how the budget would flow.
No, it like, I love the idea, but no. Like really, our money is focused, like back to the kids. In the past, I think one of the things like that was kind of intriguing is Dave Gaffey wanted a bunch of step robots, which was a pretty pricey expense. We got special approval for that. It was like under 10K. We're certainly never like raising in the millions of dollars anyway. We barely scrape by every year, every year trying to get the funds that we sort of showed on the prior deck. But no, I don't think that's something we typically, stuff like that, I don't think we typically do. I don't know if you want to say.
Yeah, no, I agree. Actually, former PTO everything, but you wouldn't never, like that's the town's citizens' responsibility for the main operating cost of the schools. The parent groups are there to add those things that aren't really appropriate to be in our budget. And that's so, you know, like food for the educators, special grants for their classroom supplies.
Exactly.
Curriculum enrichment has been in place forever. Actually, I reckon my kids went through Chickering, some of the authors up there are still there, but I will tell you how impactful it is when you talk about, it ties to the curriculum. And we used to have Ted Shy, the poetry guy. I mean, the kids, like, those are memories that they have and so it's so great that we have the parents to go raise the money to bring that in because that's probably not something we can necessarily cover in our operating budget. So you're really adding the, you know, the cherry on top of things that we can provide, that next layer.
Yeah. And every curriculum enrichment event, the liaison will do a little write-up and it gets sent to the parents, so like they can see where their money is going. They're like, oh, okay, I donated to the PTO, this was their enrichment. And like, oh, they did Mindful Squirrel today, they came and they learned about plans. And then there's like always questions at the end, like bring it home, talk to your kids, so it sort of ties it all together.
And the activities you do is community building as well. I mean, auctions was such a community event to bring everyone together and it's a byproduct that you raise money in a way, but it's a way to sort of bring the, you know, the parent community together and have something to rally around. And, because you can definitely, I mean, the PTO has helped us with the playground. You gave us some money towards when we had to resurface the playground. So there's certain times that we may come forward and ask for, to see if we can collaboratively be involved, you know, have some funding, but typically we want that, all those nice things that we can't put in our budget for the PTO to fund.
Yeah. I remember I was involved with PTO during COVID and there was a need for movable wipeboards to roll back. Do you remember Deb?
Yeah.
And I think PTO was able to support that need and also I think we were challenging ordering supplies, like wipes and things through PTO, so parents can order stuff. Yeah, so for smaller things, I think, smaller and specific.
They'll see us like do a lot of the signup geniuses for like, please give your classroom the room, parents, they need paper towels and wipes. And so they'll send it out and parents can sign up and like drop off wipes and stuff like that, you know, Germax, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
All right. Next on our agenda is superintendent comments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So just some updates and then I'll pass the baton to Assistant Superintendent Conklin. So thank you to Dr. Reineman and Mr. Carins for hosting the open house, September 2015, like a long time ago, but it was really just a few weeks ago. We also had the opening of our turf field and as you can see, we have our soccer teams out there today. If you haven't been out there yet, you really have to go out there. It is stunning and it's just such an amazing complex now. And we had everybody come together in late September. We had our first home football game out there and it was really an opportunity to thank the taxpayers of both Dover and Sherborne, who obviously donated the turf, but also the boosters, Mudge and DSC TV for the press box and the bleachers. And then Rusty Wade, who's a parent, works for KRA USA and he donated the speakers.
Great.
Which are fantastic. I was getting a mic hard to run home between meetings and the soccer team was warming up and the music was pretty intense. It was also an opportunity to recognize the DS team that worked so hard and putting that together. It was a three-year endeavor and Dawn led that with John Smith, the high school principal, our athletic department, and then our groundskeepers. So thank you to Dawn and the team. That was, that was a lot of work and it paid off. This is just amazing. We are obviously, you know, into a new school year, always thinking about emergency planning. So we have had our district-based and school-based emergency team meetings with the chiefs and then at the school level. Today, we actually had a lockdown drill at the region, at the Middleland High School, and there'll be a lockdown drill coming up at Chickering in the near future. And we're also hosting a parent meeting that came out of actually one of the recommendations here on November 6th at 6:30 at Chickering and we'll have the chiefs there, school resource officers, Deb, myself, to answer questions and talk about, you know, everything that goes into the planning, both at the physical plant, the procedures and drills, and how as parents you can help and what you can expect.
That's great.
We are in full negotiation mode starting next week, so thank you to Kate and Jessie for serving on the negotiation team. We've had two meetings together and next Wednesday, we'll be meeting with the teachers' union to start talking about what it is that we want to solve together this year. So more to come on that. Class visits, I've had the opportunity, as has Denny, to spend some time at Chickering visiting classes with our principals and getting around to see the new math curriculum in year two, you know, to see the kids in action. And last week, I was with Dr. Reineman. She has launched, which is one of our district and school goals, is having the teachers visit each other's classrooms to kind of steal magic and ideas from each other. And so I did a walkabout with Deb and two teachers who visited younger grades. So they got an insight into where the kids are coming from, some of the strategies that other teachers use to take back to their classroom and a great reflective conversation afterwards. So thank you for that. And other than that, we have an MCAS update. So I'm happy to answer questions around those pieces or anything else and then we'll turn it over to Denny.
Any questions?
No questions here, but I guess now that the PTO meeting is over, just wanted to say hello and apologize for being virtual again. I'm in New York this week. I wanted to be back, but I was, I got stuck for tonight, so I'll hopefully see you all in person for the next one, but for now, you're stuck with me on a big screen. And I've been in that room, so I know how physically large I am.
Thanks, Kevin, for joining us virtually.
Okay, so on to MCAS, Mr. Conklin.
All right. So now you've been waiting all year for this presentation and I've been waiting all year for this presentation to talk through our spring 2025 MCAS results. So before we get going, just some background information. Every year, we like to start with this quote because it kind of grounds us in what we're about to talk about. So it's from John Hattie, who says, "The major purpose of assessment in schools should be to provide interpretive information to teachers and school leaders about their impact on students so that these educators have the best information about what steps to take with instruction and how they need to change and adapt." So assessments play a big role in our classroom, but the MCAS is just one of the many assessments that we use. So this is our lovely data pyramid and you can see in the bottom, teachers are assessing every single day. So they're walking around the classroom, talking to students, they're doing exit tickets, students are self-reflecting, teachers are checking in, so this is happening every day. Teachers are making on-the-spot decisions, decisions for the next day in class based on these things. One to four times a month, you might have some common assessments, math problem of the week, for example, science journals, other student products. And then quarterly or at the end of the unit, you might have our summative assessments. So those are tests, quizzes, projects that sum up an entire unit. Two to three times a year, we do diagnostic tools and benchmarking. So that's through iExcel, through Dibbles, through our number screener. We gather information about students' SEL needs from Panorama and at the high school, middle school, or at the high school, we admit charts and finals. And then, then there are things that happen just once a year at the top of the pyramid. So in the case of our elementary students, the MCAS is one of those data points. So it is helpful for us because it allows us to see on a standardized way how we compare to different, to the state, to other districts, while at the same time, we realize that it is just kind of illuminating a path for teachers and giving us more information, but doesn't fully tell the story. But the teachers can use the information to make decisions about how they're going to shape their instruction for this year. So I'll start off just by talking about the overall state landscape. So the new DESI commissioner gave an update a couple of weeks ago on the overall state results and trends. So overall, in grades three through eight in ELA, there is about a 3% increase overall and our students who met expectations or exceeded them. Then overall, math stayed flat across the state. And then you can see some of the changes at the high school level in science for grade four, no change in grade five. And then one of the things that they've been thinking about is the impact of question two, which eliminated the MCAS as a competency determination at the high school level. So statewide, they saw an increase in blank responses, especially in the essay section. We actually just got copies of our student essays, we're kind of looking through them and seeing how many students we might have had that might have given blank responses, but they didn't see any overall big decreases in participation rates across the state. So I think there was a bit of a fear that without the MCAS as a competency determination requirement, that people were just, weren't going to show up or maybe not take the test seriously. I'll say that in DS at the high school level, we had a hu, very high participation, I think 99% participation. Our students took it very seriously. Our ELA scores actually went up 6%, so we went the complete opposite of the state. So so far at the high school level, we're not seeing any impact that our students aren't taking the test seriously still. And then as a district, as school leaders, as teachers, here's the stuff that we look at when we get these scores in. So the first part is about achievement. So that's gonna appear as a numerical student scaled score. So these scores are measured against the Massachusetts frameworks and they usually stay relatively steady over the years. You don't see huge swings back and forth in the scores. One of the things that we pay close attention to is the percentage of our students who meet or exceed expectations. So DESI sets these ranges, which you can see below. So for a score of 440 to 469 puts you not meeting, 470 to 499 partially meeting, 500 to 529 meeting expectations, and then 530 to 560 exceeding expectations. We can use these to compare one cohort year to another. So for example, how did this year's third graders do versus last year's third graders? We also try to, and we're lucky because we're small, we can really go through student by student and look at the bubble students that were on the bubbles of maybe they were at partially meeting and were really close to meeting expectations in ways that we can work specifically with the students. And then for the sake of DESI statistics, they consider any change that's plus or minus 2% to be meaningful. So anything less than that, they don't consider to be meaningful. Another feature that we look at is the SGP, the student growth percentile. So the student growth percentile measures how students have improved relative to themselves from year to year. So third graders, you won't see an SGP because the students have never taken the MCAS before, but every year after third grade, you'll see an SGP. So in third grade, it kind of sets a benchmark and then the state makes a projection over how each student should be growing from year to year and that's reported in a number score. So DESI considers anything in the 50s to be about average growth, 60 or higher is above average growth. So that's a good way to see how our students are progressing and measuring against themselves. We also look at our cohort growth. So how did one group of students, as they're going up and moving through the grades, how are they changing and how are they progressing through the grade levels? Another thing that we look at specifically, our coaches and our teachers, is the item analysis. So that will give a list of all the different questions and the types of questions and how those are related to standards. It separates them into kind of big bucket domains within content area. So for example, in ELA, the big buckets are writing, reading, language and the essay. We try to look at the differential between how our Dover Sherborne students did and how the state did. So we want to see, we usually see a pretty healthy gap between how our DS students do and how the state did. And then we make comparisons between this year and last year. So this gives us a lot of information, detailed information about how students did. And we can go back when DESI releases questions, which sometimes happens and sometimes doesn't. Teachers can go back and say, oh, students didn't do well on this question, but this question was worded in a way that the students wouldn't be familiar with. So we can see, was it the question or perhaps are there ways that we could improve instruction for the year? And then finally, we'll get subgroup data. So the subgroups that we look at are high need students. High needs is kind of the larger overarching umbrella that includes students with disabilities, our multilingual learners and our low-income students. We also look at each of those groups separately, but high needs is the one that includes all of those. And we look down, look at the MCAS results broken down by race. So before we get to Chickering's results, one final note that I think is important is that due to the small class sizes in our elementary grades, so typically we have under 100 per grade level, percentages, so when you're seeing percentages, they can be highly sensitive. So just up or down a couple of students is going to raise the percentages a lot. So for example, in a grade of 65 students, a shift of five students can raise a percentage by eight points. So from 60% to 68%. So if just five students move from one category to another, you know, it's only five kids, but it's gonna have, it's gonna look in the percentages like it's a really, really meaningful change. So just something to think about when we're looking at percentages. So how did our students do this past year? So we'll start off with ELA. To orient you, you'll see how our students performed 2024 in the gray column. In the blue column, you'll see how they did in 2025. And then in that last white column, you'll see how we did in reference to the state. Then below, you can see that 69% of our students were meeting and exceeding in the LA in grades three through five. That was up five percentage points from the year before and almost 30 points above the state average. The average scale score went up three points from the year before, up to 509. That was 15 points above the state average. And our SGP, our average SGP was 53.7. That was up four points from the previous year. And again, DESI considers anything in the 50s to be typical or normal growth. So seeing our students increasing in ELA, I think specifically you can look at from year to year, the students in our meeting category went up. So last year, we had 54% meeting expectations and this year, we moved that up to 58%. In terms of math, and we're gonna talk more specifically about math because we had a new curriculum this year. In terms of math, here's how our students did. So overall, 72% of our students were meeting or exceeding. That's down 5% from the previous year. Our scaled score stayed level, which was at 513, and our SGP was at 48, which was two points down from the previous year. So I'll talk a little bit more about the correlation between this and our new math curriculum in a couple of slides. And then finally, our fifth grade students take science. So you can see that 78% of our fifth graders met or exceeded expectations. That was up 2% from the previous year, 32% above the state average. And our average scaled score is 514. That was up three points from the previous year. So the things that we want to celebrate is that our Chickering students continue to perform well above the state averages. When we look at the item analysis, we can see that as well. We made some progress for some of our subgroups in ELA. So students with disabilities or high need students and our Black and African-American students, we had higher percentages of those students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. Our fourth grade ELA students, they went up an average of 8% in their essay in writing questions and reading questions. Our fifth grade students, they went up an average of 10% in the essay in questions relating to writing and in questions relating to language. On the science MCAS questions relating to technology and engineering, our students went up 15% from the previous year. So our teachers, Mr. Gaffney, are doing a good job in this technology and engineering questions. So we had been waiting to see how the first year of the new math curriculum was going to have any impact on our MCAS scores. So I would say overall, the scores came in where we expected them to. You know, it's very typical for districts to see what is referred to as an implementation dip. So as teachers and as students are getting used to a new curriculum, sometimes there can be dips in how students do on standardized tests. So if you go back to this, you can see that we had, for meeting and exceeding expectations, we went down 5%. I would say a really notable implementation dip would be somewhere between 8 to 10%. So, you know, not huge. I think the good news here is that our average scaled score stayed steady, so that didn't really change. And the percentage of our students who met or exceeded expectations remained above 70%. I think also notable is that we had the highest percentage of students who were in that exceeding category since 2021. So that's a good accomplishment as well. So what if any was the immediate impact? Again, myself, our math coach, and our teachers, building leaders are still looking at the item analysis. I would say overall, our students did much better this year on questions relating to fractions and algebraic thinking and operations. In fact, our fifth grade went up 14% in questions related to fractions. And just anecdotally being in classrooms, it feels like our students have a more solid understanding of fractions. Sometimes these things live as just like images in our head of like a quarter of a pie, for example. But one thing we try to get our students to think of is that fractions are essentially division problems. And what's the relation in between a fraction, a division problem, a decimal? And we're seeing a stronger understanding of that, I think because of the new curriculum and the focus that it has on explaining the conceptual understanding of fractions. Our fifth grade cohort, their SGP math went up 12 points from the previous year on average. So our fifth graders saw a lot of growth when they went up from fourth to fifth grade. Our focus areas for this year relating to the MCAS. So our ELA analysis suggests that students need more support in analyzing writing and producing writing. So we want students to just be writing more so that their essay portion of the test can be strengthened. So we're focusing on increasing response to reading, so written responses to what students are reading. And then our students also struggled a little bit on some of the writing questions that we're asking about writing structures and the author's intent. Those are more sophisticated questions. So it might be a reading passage. And it might say in the second paragraph, why did the author choose to use the word dismal? What impact did that have? So it's getting at why the author makes specific decisions when they're writing. So we're going to focus on some of those questions this year and helping build that in our students as well. Our math item analysis suggests that our students need to continue building conceptual understanding versus procedural fluency. So our students are good at the calculations and using the algorithms to get answers. But the understanding of why those work is where we need to continue to grow. So one of the things that we need to look at is the conceptual understanding, the multiplication and division. Multiplication, when I grew up, I learned is just multiple, uh, memorizing the multiplication tables. But you might see students working with arrays or the area model to gain that understanding of why nine times nine equals 81. So we want to focus more on that. We also have a number of teachers that are focusing on project-based learning within math so that students can see a real world relevance to what they're learning about in math. And we're hoping that that's something that is also going to help our students when they're looking at word problems. And a lot of times, those word problems have that real world connection. Our connection to our district improvement efforts. So we'll continue to analyze our MCAS data this year. As Superintendent McCoy talked about earlier in the air, we're convening a K through 12 district data team to look at trends throughout the entire district. So not just at the elementary level, middle school, and high school level. We're in our second year of revealed implementation. I think one of the biggest changes obviously is that our teachers and our students are feeling more comfortable with the curriculum. One of the things that, you know, I've talked to some of the teachers about is that students are coming into their new grades with the same vocabulary. So students are coming into second grade already knowing what decompose means. So that a teacher doesn't have to explain it and define it and show students, but know the kind of vocabulary and the language that students are coming in. We revised all of our pacing guides over the summer. One area that we want to continue to improve on in math is geometry. And that's usually the thing that comes last in the curriculum. So last year, you know, teachers were learning the program. We had some pacing issues here and there. We threw in some geometry lessons, but this year, we have new pacing guides to make sure we get through all of the curriculum and students are best prepared to show what they know on something like the MCAS. We're continuing in ELA with our program review of our current ELA curriculum. I'll have more information on that at your next school committee meeting, I would assume. So you might recall over the summer, our teachers were evaluating the current ELA program against the criteria that they established last year. And we'll know soon whether or not the programs meet that criteria or whether or not we start, need to start looking at other programs to meet that criteria. So that is the big overview of our MCAS. I'm happy to take any questions that people have about the MCAS. So is that for Ryan?
Thank you so much. Any, any questions?
No, I mean, that sounds pretty fantastic. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin and Sally, do you have any questions?
No, thanks for the deep review. Appreciate the hard work that goes into that.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I got a question from a parent questioning if they, they wanted to see if this is a trend or that's what they had to leave with their own experience. They were saying that they were seeing a smaller growth at elementary level, but then in middle school, the growth was much better. So I, I don't know if the plan that you have to look at the data from K to 12, that might help to answer those type of questions. And just wanted to know if you have seen a trend already that the growth at elementary level or at different levels is different or not?
I mean, typically at the elementary and the middle school, SGPs or growth stay somewhere in the upper 50s, lower 60s. And then when students take the MCAS in 10th grade, that's when we see a huge jump. I think our SGPs in science or in ELA and math this year at the high school were like in the 70s. So that just reflects the enormous amount of learning and growth and maturing and development that I think happens between eighth grade and when they take the test again in 10th grade. So I would say that's pretty typical to see kind of the smaller incremental growths in the elementary grades and middle grades and then kind of a big jump at the high school.
Okay. And then I also got another question from parents about the average math score. Our average math score being just a little bit over the state. And they were asking, are you concerned? Is there any concern about that or not? I mean, the, the implementation of the new math, as you said, probably not seeing a dip is great. And we are also, we are seeing an improvement, right?
Kenny, can you make that slide bigger?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we were, in scaled score, we were 18 points higher than the state average. I'd say usually we see anywhere between 20 to 30 points above the state average. So not that far off, I would say. You know, like they always say, the trend is your friend. So if our scores continue to stay the way they are, then I think we have more investigating to do. But I'll be very curious to see next year what happens.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I know last year you were really concerned about, or you called out that you were concerned. What's the, it's like the subgroup, the subgroups that you were most concerned? Did you, where, what's your sort of anecdotal review of those groups this year?
So pretty much all of our subgroups in ELA made progress. So again, the percentage that are either meeting or exceeding, or they saw increases in their average scores in ELA. In math, it was kind of, they kind of went along with the trend. So we saw, it's still something that we want to look at. I know that our wonderful math coach has been doing some coaching cycles with special educators. So typically, it's a lot of our classroom teachers that do coaching cycles. But that collaboration, I think, is going to be really useful for looking at our students with disabilities and kind of helping them, helping the teachers work with them, helping our classroom teachers work with that group and focusing some attention on that. But I know that, again, we're lucky that we're so small, we can take a look at all of our students in these categories, our high need students, look at their scores. And then at our data team meetings, at common playing time, teachers can have conversations about very specific students. So I think in larger districts, it can be very daunting to look at these subgroups. But I think that we can, we, we're better equipped to kind of tackle the specific needs of them. And I think with our interventions that we have set up right now, that also is providing a lot of support to some of our subgroups.
Any more questions?
Thank you for all this hard work.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's amazing. Thank you.
Well done, Danny.
All right. Next on our agenda is financial reports.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You have in your package your monthly accounts payable warrants for that report. Of the warrants have been processed since your last meeting. Again, it has the amount. And then if you look at the funds, you see general school, general OOD, our circuit breaker, food service, the grants. So that just gives you insight into the bills that we processed on your behalf. You have your monthly report. So this is our first glimpse of how we're looking as compared to the fiscal year '26 budget. We'll get to spend one month of that before we jump into fiscal year '27. But so I think that this is a good snapshot as far as the salaries. Keep in mind on the expenditures, we are so new into the school year that you're going to see a lot of money remaining there because there's still money to be spent. So I think the only one we can sort of spend a little time talking about is our encumbrances. Because once we start open school, we have every employee on payroll and we encumber their salary for the whole year. So just a couple of things to note. In your educators' classroom, which includes your classroom educators as well as our specialists, we are seeing a negative variance of about $47,000. That represents staff members who left and were replaced with new staff members, and so the salary is varied. It also represents, we had a little bit, we had a few, we had greater number of lane changes this year. Typically, for purposes of being as conservative, we can, the budget, don't put lane changes in the budget. Well, it was a little bit more than normal. So we're seeing that negative impact, but we'll have opportunities in other line items to make up for that. Under the educators that encompass all of our special education staff, if you recall, I think it was a year or two ago where as we use outside services to a point where it's becoming routine, there's a desire by the union and probably properly for payroll purposes anyway, to bring that person on as an employee. And so we brought on a .6 SLP position. Keep in mind that there, there was money down in the Fed Services line item. You'll see about $30,000 savings there right now. That's where that activity was when we did the budget. It's now up in salaries. That along with, again, some changes in positions and some staff changes are showing us a negative variance of about $55,000 in that line item. You'll see some savings in educational assistance right now, but that's mainly because we have actually an open position that sits in the general fund. So once that position is hired, you'll see those funds go away. We'd make a point of just saying that that's not savings right now. That is just a temporary vacancy in the position. Our substitutes obviously will continue to be used and that amount will go down. Same with custodial services. We have overtime in that bucket. So that is also why you see some savings there. We have had some changes in staffing and some of the other line items. I'll highlight the school leadership building. As you know, one of your 12-month administrative assistants in the front office retired. As the administrative assistants from, who've been with us for a long time have retired, most of our other buildings have, have gone to more like a 10 or 11 month, so not a 12 month. So we've replaced the 12-month with a 10-month employee. And obviously, because the person who retired had been here for a while, there's also salary savings. So you're getting a double bonus there. But as you can see, there's some money there that'll help offset some of our other negative variances. Again, on the school committee side, the only things to highlight, as I just mentioned, the savings in the Fed Services reflects moving the SLP up to salary. And we are, our heating oil bid did come in at $2.22. We had budgeted $2.75. So we're obviously have a little bit of a positive variance in utilities because of that. So any questions on the in-district before I jump to out-of-district? So the out-of-district, we have seen an increase in placements over what we budgeted. We had budgeted for 17 and we have 22. That is bringing us to, right now, a negative, I guess, intuition cost of about $800,000. It's made up of a couple of different pieces and you'll have to go back in your memory. So really, the new placement is about $415,000. Keep in mind, we had this long discussion with the town last year about that we, we knew we had a new placement coming on of a, of a large figure, a residential case. But we also knew we had a residential case that was going to age out. So rather than grossing up your budget, we knew we were going to have that as a negative variance this year. And we also have an extremely high circuit breaker reimbursement this year. So at the end of the day, the town will be okay. And I think it was thus from our perspective to not overtax the taxpayers for that one sort of transition that we knew was going to happen. So of that $800,000, about $475,000 was that one placement that we talked about that we made a strategic decision to handle this way. We also had some, some placement changes. So even though we were, that's more than $800,000, we had $90,000 savings because a student or two, we thought last year was going to go to one school. They ended up going to another school and there were savings from that. On the, on the flip side, because we have five more placements than we budgeted, obviously, we have to transport those students. And so our transportation budget therefore is over budgeted by, I think, about $150,000. But the good news is, we're getting $1.9 million in circuit breaker. So that is there as, as to cover us for these unknown and unbudgeted amounts. But at the same time, we still are looking at turning, we'll have a turn back to the state, the town hopefully, because 1.9 million, we're not going to be over 1.9 million. Your circuit breaker will go down at fiscal year '27. Again, it was like a perfect storm last year. We had a lot of expenses. Some of them aged out. Some of them will age out again. So we'll get back to a normal number. And keep in mind too, that we talked about, out-of-district, it's very confusing. We talked about DESI's request for us to handle our out-of-district budgeting differently moving forward. Just to give you perspective, the 1.9, oh, sorry, the $1.9 million in circuit breaker, only $65,000 of that is attributed to a pre-K through five cohort. So the bulk of that circuit breaker is actually going to go to the region moving forward.
Can we say that one more time?
So if you, if we're getting $1.9 million in circuit breaker, if you break that apart into like what's Dover School Committee officially, which is pre-K through five, only $65,000 of that is, is being reimbursed on kids between pre-K and five.
Is that because of connections? Is that?
No. So if you remember, up to this point, any student between ages of three and 22 who needed special education services, who lived in Dover, was part of your budget. Moving forward, DESI wants you to cover students in grades age three through grade five. And then moving to the district, to the region will be grade six through 20, age 22. So right now, your piece of that huge bucket of money is small.
So you'll see that, that's going to move away from your budget. And when I do '27, it's going to move up to the region.
Got it. Okay.
Right. So I think to put perspective on that, you're used to sitting in school committee in Dover and hearing these large circuit breaker numbers. Well, next year, we talk about your circuit breaker. It's going to be very small.
Why, can I ask a question? Why was that initially designed that way? It seemed more logical to have that funded by the appropriate school committee, right?
So the regional agreement puts the, the financial responsibility for out-of-district students to the town of, where the student lives.
I see. And so.
To make it easy, way back when, when the region was sort of established, every single dollar of out-of-district expenses sat at the two locals because the region didn't have any financial responsibility for those students.
I see.
But from an accounting standpoint, the departmentate, department- But from an accounting standpoint, the department Ed, Department of Ed says, you know, you need to have the activity where the student belongs for better reporting purposes. So we'll still have to assess Dover and Sherburne, their piece of what circuit breaker doesn't cover for out of district, but it's going to be added as part of their regional assessment.
Yeah, I guess it shows them a different budget and the, the taxpayer is still on the hook, but it shows them a different budget.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's all totality, we're still the same, it's just where it's going to sit. And I'll be honest, it, it actually makes your budget much easier to um talk about because it confuses people why you have such a large out of district budget. They really do think it's just elementary.
Hmm.
Um, and so this will make your, your budget look more appropriate for pre-K through five districts.
So did I hear correctly that you're expecting here a budget surplus despite some of the unexpected outrages?
Yes, and that's, that's by design by the town of Dover. They, uh, they build the budget with the anticipation that we're going to receive zero dollars in circuit breaker, so that we've always got that safety net. So they, they're at, they, they build their budget with a hundred percent of the cost, not taking into consideration that some of that's going to be reimbursed.
And so, and can you remind me that terminal, circuit breaker terminology is budget coming from a, from a, from the state or elsewhere?
Y- yes, being reimbursed by the state. There's a formula that follows, but we're responsible for a piece of it. And anything over that, we get seventy-five percent back as reimbursement.
Okay, makes sense.
Is that, is the expect, is that typical to get that many additional out of districts in one year that would?
Um, I will say that is a population that fluctuates immensely.
Okay.
Um, and it's, it's, there's no way to, you know, we built this budget really back in March.
Yep.
And there's still a lot of activity happening. So um, that's why I think Dover, one of the reasons why Dover has budgeted the way they have, because they never have to worry. There, there's always a safety net there for that fluctuate, fluctuating population.
Well, and a few students in, in or out of that program has a huge variability in our budget because it's such a small district, I assume, right?
Um, yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What, and those are students who need special education assistance that cannot be offered as efficiently through Dover?
Through, exactly. And, you know, we have, we've had been successful in um reducing the number of placements by building some of these programs that we have in district.
Sure.
I mean, one of them way back was the pre-K program. We used to place pre-K students out until we brought the integrated pre-K um classroom into, right? I don't know, I forget how many years ago that was, but.
Eleven.
Eleven years. Uh, we didn't have a pre-K until then.
Sure.
But we had six, one year we had six students um from Dover placed out for pre-K. And therefore, I was on school committee, they brought it forward that we need to bring in a pre-K, um, integrated pre-K program. So we did that. Um, we have now the connections.
Right.
That we've, right, been building. And then we have a couple of strands K-12 with language-based and, and those, those are, so where we can have a cohort of students, we can build probably an in district special education program. But our problem a lot of times is because we're small, you can't build a program if you only have two kids who may fluctuate. So that's why we also probably have a little bit higher of uh students who go out of district because we don't have a cohort in district for them to have a program with.
Is there?
But that's why I'll say that we are the members of the collaborative.
Sure.
Because then the collaborative is able to build those programs, so the member district can send their students that have a cohort.
At a reasonable cost.
At a reasonable cost, yeah.
That makes sense.
So I'm sure we will talking more about that, but it's integral to talk about the investment that we have made in district that does help um mitigate our out of district as best we can.
That's, that makes sense. Is there any sort of percolating thought about a new cohort that, like, you're seeing, maybe this is a, a conversation for the future, but is there any sort of like, um, based on the current populations, is there?
Yeah, not, not really. We, we look at, you know, our in, our internal documents show the diagnosis, like what
With the diagnoses and things like that, yeah.
The program is, so we could look. We also go to our collaboratives and we talk, like, is someone seeing something?
Yeah.
That we could build something.
So we feel like we're meeting.
Compliment. Yeah.
We're, we're, we're best meeting the needs of the students at the levels that we can right now.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
So that is um your first glimpse at fiscal year twenty-six and we'll continue to give you obviously monthly updates as we meet. And the next update will be helpful as we then um sort of uh have the jumping board off to fiscal year twenty-seven because things we know right now, we can build into uh version one point oh of your fiscal year twenty-seven budget.
Thank you.
I will, I will just say, we are exceptionally lucky to have your expertise, so very grateful for that review and the, the many years of context that you can bring to it because we're still learning it. Appreciate it.
Yep, happy to answer any questions, Kevin. I like to spread the knowledge.
You spread it well.
Um, and then that just rolls into, so uh, interestingly enough, your next meeting, we will be presenting the budget um into summer.
For next year.
For next year, yeah.
Next year.
Um, and so it always gives an opportunity now that you've sort of looked at twenty-six, you've heard a good cast board, you've had one or two meetings, if there's anything in particular that school committee would like for us to um incorporate into our budget discussions as we roll out version one point oh. Keep in mind that version one point oh is really, really the starting point. We will take between December and March to really analyze and talk about things that are coming up. Um, and so do look at it as the starting point, um, because we have multiple, couple, at least two other versions that we'll be able to do before you have to do your final approval in March and then goes off to, to the towns. Um, but if there's, you know, anything, we obviously um just started the process internally. Um, you know, we look at uh, treat, plan the goals, what's happening. Um, you know, we probably have a little bit more information than you do, but if there's anything high level um that you'd like to bring forward, um, this is sort of the opportunity to throw it out there so that we have an opportunity to incorporate it as we start our um internal meetings.
So for example, it'd be to, you know, continue to roll out with a lot of support the new math curriculum. It would be continue to look at the literacy curriculum and make decisions in the best interest of kids, kinds of things.
Yeah.
Coming out of the pandemic, it was focus on SEL for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
So if there's any priorities now.
Yeah.
It, not curriculum based, but I know that we've begun to have some conversations around adding um potentially, or considering ways to add support to students in classroom, whether it be through AAs or other types of policy revisions or anything else. Um, I don't know if this is the right forum to address it and, um, but I know that some of those conversations have started and perhaps have budgetary requirements. And so I thought we should at least align on a plan for which we can start to think about those options.
Thank you. And I think the good news is, is when we sit down with, with um Deb and Jim, for example, to talk about the Chicaring budget, um, Kate McCarthy, our Director of Student Services, and Laura Driscoll, your Special Education Coordinator, will be at the table. Um, and so as, as Dawn said, this, you know, this first conversation is just the beginning and we'll be able to analyze needs and data between now and March, March, but they're certainly going to keep that in mind in terms of how best to support the kids. Like you said, there's, there's a variety of ways you can go about it, but we'll have all the brains at the table trying to come up with the best recommendation for you all to consider.
That's great, that's great. Thank you. Any more questions? No?
Thank you, thank you so much, Dawn.
Thank you. So I think I'm up again.
Yes.
So um, this is the, the meeting where we typically uh approve your version one point oh of your capital plan. Just to give you a little back, background, the town is at a point where they've got uh a lot, if you've been to town meeting, a large amount of capital requests coming up over the next five years. So they've hired an outside consultant to come in and um help them strategize funding, um, how to like um do a timeline to spread things out. And so uh they actually have been on us aggressively to get our plan. So I said, bring it to school committee tonight and we'll send it off. Um, we're fortunate though that we're in um still sort of a new building um in, in Chicaring and that is just, you know, it's a little over twenty years old. We have taken care of every square inch of flooring um in that school to our um betterment of both um work hours and what our staff, custodial staff have to do, but also for the environment, that we're not using all the striping and waxing anymore. Um, the um AC that was installed, uh, you know, the anything of replacement for that is down the road. So what we're looking at right now is probably mainly centered around our um air handlers and our HVAC systems. And they are still in operational um state that we don't have to be concerned over like the next, definitely not next summer. Um, we put them on placeholders for the following summer, but we are this year, and we said we were going to do this last year and we just ran out of time. Uh, we will be engaging an engineering firm to come and we've done this at the, the region as well, where they come and they'll look at, assess all of our HVAC air handlers. Uh, give us an estimate of their remaining life, but then also give us a plan as to approximate cost um to start replacing those. And then that's where we'll take that and build. Uh, keep in mind, um, and Kevin, you'll, I think you've heard this before, but we've always put off the air conditioning in the cafeteria until we came upon this replacement cycle because there's a feeling that we can sort of um more efficiently combine it with uh, it's part of the building that's already air conditioned, but maybe just increasing the size of the um HVAC RTU or, you know, maybe it does make sense to split it, but we decided to pair it with this work.
Hmm.
Um, so that will be part of the request that we also asked the engineering firm to do is to say, what's the best way to incorporate this space um in order to be incorporate AC into it? Um, so that will take place this year. We'll have the information in time next October so that we can refine these numbers. So as you can see, we're not knowing the town's demands right now and the fact that we really don't need to do anything in that building, we're not going to put anything forward for fiscal year twenty-seven. And then we're giving them placeholders for some of the HVAC equipment um over the next two years. And we continue to sort of, we moved it out a couple more years, obviously, to replace the roof at Chicaring, but we've had absolutely no issues with that. It comes on to your onsite insight report around year twenty, but most roofs, roofs last until about thirty years. So we've got that leeway, we keep an eye on it. Um, I'm not going to say, I, because I'm not going to let there is, that we, it's been something that we haven't had to worry about. And so we've pushed that out to like twenty, thirty, just knowing that the town's got all this stuff and they're going to put this into their formula.
Hmm.
Um, but if you look at our twenty-year capital plan outside of these items, there really is nothing significant um coming up. So I think that should give some relief to the towns that they're looking. And obviously, we'll work with them collaboratively where we can push things off, um, if there's other competing projects that they need to more urgently address. So we've always been a collaborative partner with that because in all three um arenas, our schools are one of the biggest assets that the town has. Um, so we're bringing this forward tonight, asking for your approval so that we can get it to the town. If anything changes in the interim, we have to get into March um to get your final approval, but there is nothing that we see on the horizon for twenty-seven and um, again, placeholders for the next four years.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Do we need to?
Yeah, they need to vote.
Not right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause um, okay. Um, all right. Um, do I have a motion to uh move um the fiscal year twenty-seven capital plan?
Yeah, when you see the, the fiscal year, the uh, the five year.
The five year.
Yeah.
Capital plan.
Capital plan.
Kate.
Yeah, but.
Jesse, also moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Kate Cook, second.
Thank you, Kate. I think we need to do a roll call.
Yeah.
Um, Kevin Balke?
Uh, Kevin Milkie, yes.
Kate.
Brooke, yes.
Jessie, sorry. I'm looking at Jessie and saying, really? Oh, wait, do we? No, no. Yes, Brooke.
Kate Cook, yes.
Goldie Sefer, uh, yes, motion, motion anonymous.
Thank you, we'll send this to the town in the morning.
All right. Um, next on our agenda is consent items. So we have three uh consent items on our agenda. First is the PTO request for use of cafeteria and uh being able to serve alcohol uh during the fundraising event. And this is pending the town uh approval. Uh, but we need to vote to approve it too. Our second item for um uh voting is approval, approval of minutes of September sixteen of twenty twenty-five of Dover School Committee meeting. And then the third one is the fiscal year twenty-six grants um acceptance. And there was a detailed information in our packets about um grants. Um, do you have any questions about any of these items?
No.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna get a vote for all the three of I, of these items together. May I have a motion to um approve the request for um usage of cafeteria and serving alcohol on fundraising in, on April eleventh of twenty twenty-six and approval of minutes of Dover School Committee meeting on September sixteen, twenty twenty-five and acceptance of grants for fiscal year twenty-six.
Kate Cook, so moved.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jessie. All right, Kevin Balke?
I vote Kevin Milkie, yes.
Thank you, Jessie Hall.
Yep.
Kate Cook, yes. Goldie Sefer, yes. All three um are moved.
Great.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is the inform, informational items in our packet. Um, any questions about those? Any comments?
Yep, hopefully pretty straightforward.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And um, is there any specific item for November eighteenth meeting?
That'll be first look at the budget and then um between now and then we'll have our safety meetings if there's any feedback or suggestions coming out of that. Love to hear them.